To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in recognition of the American patriots who have served and continue to serve our nation both home and abroad. Clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Boochi, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Fohlong, Kenon, Lucy, Nesta, Spatafora.
Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for the delay in the meeting. We had a budget meeting, and as you can probably imagine, that is right now at the center of the council's attention. And I just want to bring everybody up to speed who's watching. The governor, as you may or may not be aware of, has sent down his 9C cuts, which translate to the city of Marlin of roughly $1.5 million. The city will have until a deadline of April 1st to take that $1.5 million into this current fiscal 2009 budget. And the city council was meeting on the beginning stages of what will amount to either a reduction or looking for a revenue increase of that $1.5 million. In all likelihood, it will lean to the latter of a reduction. And we're going to try to do that as uneffortly and unresponsive as possible to the citizens of Marlin. And again, I just want to apologize to the fact that we were 42 minutes behind schedule, but that was the thing in our attention right now. Moving on to the docket, we have, Councilor Christensen has a citation or presentation to give. Councilor Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're on, Councilor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, before I get to that, I do have an update on the snow and ice removal enforcement authority, you know, giving that to the Department of Public Works. I know that we talked about doing it. We actually passed it. We ordained it the same night. We do have Bobby Knox here. If he could just come to the microphone, because I think there's been some additional questions on whether or not that is a good ordinance for the city. And the communication that I have reads as follows. These are the additional questions on whether or not we should give the Department of Public Works the expanded authority to enforce our snow and ice removal ordinance. And if there are any additional questions, we do have Mr. Knox here to answer them. The communication reads as follows. Be it hereby known to all that the Malden City Council wishes Robert Knox Jr. a very happy 40th birthday. Known around the city as the quote-unquote "de facto mayor," we are grateful to Bobby for dedicating his 40 years to his family, community, and JRM. Hopefully, the city council hasn't tired him out too much, and he will continue to be a model citizen and, more importantly, a friend of ours for years to come. Again, happy 40th birthday, given this third day of February 2009, signed by the entire city council. And I know her ward counselor, Judy Boochi, is going to say a few words as well. Happy birthday, on behalf of the council.
Thank you, Councilor Christensen and Councilor Boochi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, yes, Robert, happy birthday. And I do want you folks to know up here that Bob never shuts that next door off. When I chatted with him on his birthday, he was actually dealing with city business, getting ready and prepared to go out with his family. And I said, "Please shut it off for a couple hours and enjoy." But I do want to also commend the fact that, you know, Bob is always focused and always prioritizing the needs of the city. I've called him several times since I've become a counselor, helped me out on several different occasions. I think certainly every one of us has had his assistance. He has a fabulous team that he leads. You know, we know we've had, what now? Are we on snowstorm eight or nine? I'm not really sure anymore. Even this afternoon, I said, I called him, "Bobby, what's up? What are we doing tonight?" And he had been on his 14th hour. So I don't think there's, you know, enough to be said about Bob. I'm sure we all have our stories about Bob's good work, his ethic, and his commitment to us as a council and the leaders of the city. But more importantly, he is really committed to residents, knocking on a little woman's door for me, Mrs. Horton, 95 years old, making sure her driveway gets done by a member of his family. So I think we all have a bit of pride, knowing that you're working with us, Bobby, but also alongside us. So I personally want to thank you again. Happy birthday. Thank your family for sharing you with us as often as they do. And every now and then, it's okay to turn that next door off and enjoy them. But thank you and happy birthday.
Thank you, Councilor Boochi. Councilor Christensen for the second time.
Did you want him to? I just want to make sure the council knows there are no official questions about the expanded enforcement authority for the Department of Public Works. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Christensen. Mr. Knox, do you have any questions for the council?
I think I'm all set at this time, but thank you very much. That was really nice. I'm honored to be here, and I got to get back out there and fight the storms.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday, Mr. Knox.
Thanks. All right, guys. Thank you.
Moving right along, we also have another special announcement. This one coming from Councilor Neil Anderson. Councilor Anderson?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I have the distinction of having first served on the city council 25 years ago. Wish I could say I had spent all 25 years in the council, but I was first elected back 25 years ago. And it was shortly after my first, as I was into my first term, that the city council or the city needed a new city clerk. That the city clerk that was there, Charlie D'Alessio, was retiring. And so what the city needed was a bright and intelligent, a capable steward to handle Malden's record-keeping, to be the official person that handled all of our voter activity and keeping all of our documents in place. And we have been well-served over these last 25 years in the person of our current city clerk, Karen Anderson. And Karen, we would like to give you this citation this evening, and it reads that, "From the city of Malden, be it hereby known to all that the Malden City Council hereby offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes to Karen Anderson in recognition of your 25th anniversary as the city clerk for the city of Malden. Your skill and wisdom has helped not only the city government, but all residents of the city of Malden as well, given this third day of February 2009, offered by your friend, city councilor Neil Anderson, and signed by all the members of the Malden City Council." Karen, you have done an outstanding job all of these years. We all rely upon you. We call upon your wisdom and your brilliance. And it's my honor to call you my friend, one of my best friends, and to be a colleague of yours here in the council. Congratulations, Karen, for 25 years.
And I don't think the council would mind a brief recess for a couple pitches for both Bobby Knox and Karen Anderson. Come on, Councilor, come on, get a couple pitches.
Sitting down. More people sitting down, right?
Okay.
Can't go too wide an angle, so someone just want to...
Well, we want Karen to figure out. I'll sit down. I'll sit down. All right, Karen, get down. All right, Karen, get down, okay. I understand, okay. Well, I'll mention that she said she was 12 years old when we hired her. You got everybody?
Oh, yeah, stand up, that'd be great.
Want me to switch? Want to get in the middle?
I'm worried.
I think it'd be useless.
No, wait, like that. No.
Perfection.
Come on, Bobby, come on up. Bobby, I should probably give you the same citation, because that one's framed.
They put them both here. You stand right there, Karen. They put Bobby right here. The two received. You got everybody? The cheap frame and the good frame. Congratulations. Thank you, Bobby. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you, everyone.
Frank, did you hear what you said to me? You are such a jerk. If I may, from the chair, I believe, you know, Councilor Anderson said it best, but I believe those words would go to, you know, not only city clerk Karen Anderson, but also Bobby. Both of them go above and beyond their job every day, and without their help, it doesn't make us look as brilliant as sometimes we do up here in the council. So again, I want to thank both Bobby Knox and Karen Anderson for their hard work and dedication to the city and to this council on an everyday basis. Thank you very much. I promise there's no more achievements or announcements today. Moving right along, approval of the minutes on Councilor Lucy's motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. The lights don't work again, Councilor. Do they work? No, neither.
Ah, okay. Men of the meeting of January 20th and January 27th.
On Councilor Lucy's motion to approve, all in favor? Minutes are approved. We're going to be taking all the appointments and election as one.
Dear members of the council pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Peter Levine of 32 Seaview Ave. to his first term as a member of the Malden Arts Council. Said term to expire March 31st, 2010. John Webster of 25 Fairview Terrace to his first term as a member of the Arts Council. Said term to expire March 31st, 2010. Catherine Streisel of 19 Payne Terrace to her first term as a member of the Arts Council. Said term to expire March 31st, 2010. Diana John of 12 West Street to her second term as a member of the Arts Council. Said term to expire March 31st, 2010. Owen Knight of 20 Valley Street to his second term as a member of the Arts Council. Said term to expire March 31st, 2010. Stephen Klandelier of 4 Glenwood Terrace to his third and final term as a member of the Arts Council. Said term to expire March 31st, 2010. And Susan Lawrence of 176 Glenwood Street to her third and final term as a member of the Arts Council. Said term to expire March 31st, 2010. Catherine Fallon of 49 Dexter Street to her third and final term as a member of the Arts Council. Said term to expire March 31st, 2011. Very truly yours, Richard C. Howard. Mayor confirmation is required.
On Councilor Paul Anderson's motion to confirm, clerk will call the roll. Councilor Christensen.
Just a point of clarification. Under our rules, are these appointments to be referred to ordinance for review and then a recommendation made to the full body?
If there are second and third of reappointments, which only the majority... and the other new ones, the rest is to suspend. So if something is to suspend, unless you're not going to go through.
The clerk, Councilor Christensen, clerk, the clerk will give you some information or clarification on that.
Councilor Christensen, you recall that the, on reappointments, it requires a majority to proceed immediately, a majority vote, to proceed immediately to reappointment for initial appointments. I believe it's a two-thirds to suspend the rule. Some of these are reappointments and some are not. So I think it would depend upon what the council determined they would like to do.
So I would, if Councilor Christensen would like to separate the two on the first term and send them to ordinance, or you could suspend our rules and do the two-thirds majority vote to put them all through immediately and let the other ones carry through, Councilor?
I don't want to hold up the docket, but, you know, I know that the Arts Council isn't meeting till February 28th. I thought we wanted to get into the habit of seeing the people that sit on these boards and commissions. I think it's worth, you know, seeing them, finding out what they're doing, how things are going, what we can do to help them, and what, you know, things that might need to be changed.
So, Councilor, just for clarification, do you want to see the reappointments as well sent to ordinance, all of them?
For my own, where I sit, yes.
Okay. If the council has no objections? So on Councilor Christensen's to refer to ordinance, all those in favor? All those opposed? They are referred to ordinance.
Application for license to drive a taxicab, Jeff Richards, 19 Vine Street, Medford; Mohammed Sahir, 27 Rich Street, Medford.
Councilor Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Is referred to license.
Application for renewal of a taxicab license, Taxi Times, 67 Porter Street, one vehicle.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to licensing, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is referred to license.
Application for renewal of Class 2 dealer's licenses, S&amp;S Truck Painting and Auto Body, 67 Maplewood Street; Brothers Auto Body, 969 Salem Street; Millennium Auto Sales, 189 Eastern Ave.; Auto Master, 259 Main Street; Century Auto Collision, 448 Eastern Ave.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is referred to license.
Application for renewal of amusement machine licenses, Ryan Family Amusements, 11 Chow Street, 40 Machines.
On Councilor Neil Anderson's motion to refer those to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is referred to license.
Be it ordained by the Malden City Council that Section 10.2 of the revised ordinances of 1991 is amended, be further amended to further define parking restrictions on private ways and fire lanes. Councilor Boochi.
On Councilor Boochi's motion to refer to ordinance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is referred to ordinance.
Be it ordained that Section 3.35 of the revised ordinances of 1991 be further amended regarding signs. Councilor Spatafora.
On Councilor Condon's motion to refer to ordinance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is referred to ordinance. Yep. If the council's not opposed, we will take all the transfers together.
Order that $40,000 be transferred from McFadden Manor Medicare user account to various McFadden Manor accounts; that $107,000 be transferred from various worker comp accounts to workers' compensation wages; that $25,000 be transferred from free cash to public facilities custodians overtime. Councilor Lucy.
On Councilor Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motions are referred to finance.
Order that the mayor and city council hereby fix the following dates and hours for the 2009 city preliminary and election for the election of ward councillors, councillors at large, and school committee members. June 30th nomination papers available, July 23rd, last day and hour to obtain nomination papers, July 28th, last day and hour to submit nomination papers for certification, August 11th, last day to file certified nomination papers, August 13th, last day to file withdrawals. Or objections to nomination, August 26th, close registration for the preliminary, September 8th, first campaign finance statement due, September 15th preliminary, September 21st, last day to withdraw from nomination at the preliminary or petition for a recount of votes at the preliminary, October 14th, close registration for the election, October 26th, second campaign finance statement due, November 3rd election, November 13th, last day to petition for recount of votes at the election. Councilor Spatafora.
Before we entertain a motion, does anybody have any questions with that? Basically, the city council or the president has the ability to create the calendar, or not create, but determine the dates for the upcoming election. Myself and the city clerk sat down and thought that would be the best schedule. So if there's any questions, hearing, Councilor DePietro.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President. Are these all going to be posted on the website, all the dates and everything?
Yes, yes, Council.
Thank you.
Council Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Besides the normal date, you know, it happened to be on Tuesdays and things of that nature, Friday afternoons maybe with the papers, is there anything much of a change with those dates? Are they all in the same ballpark as they normally are?
Yes, Council Lucy. We have the ability in the calendar to go, there's a certain, you can either go early in the calendar or later part of the month, but there is a hard stance that you have to be amicable to the non-elected officials, too, to make those dates work for everybody. So we sat down and myself and the clerk went through some dates that would summarize the past several years during election season. So there's nothing out of the ordinary by any means. You're welcome, Council. Any other questions? Councilor Christensen.
Just want to make sure, are the schools aren't in session that day?
We will coordinate that with the school department once the dates are set.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Anderson.
And I would assume that these, the preliminary and the general election, fall on the same dates that the state is, would be holding, at least the general election in November.
The city, state elections are held in even number years, city elections in odd number years. The, by law, Election Day is the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. That one's set. The preliminary is, can fall sometime in mid-September. We did speak with other communities, and most other communities are choosing to hold their preliminary on the 15th.
On the same date. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Anderson. Any other questions? Seeing none and hearing none, on Councilor DePietro's motion to adopt, all those in favor? Roll call, clerk. I'm sorry. On Councilor DePietro's motion to adopt, clerk will call the roll.
Neil Anderson.
Yes.
Paul Anderson, Boochi, Christensen.
Yes.
Condon, DePietro.
Yes.
Kenon.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes.
Nesta.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes.
Order that the council adopt rules for 2009. Councilors Christensen, Kenon, Neil Anderson, DePietro, and Nesta.
On Councilor Christensen's motion to adopt, clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Neil Anderson.
Yes.
Paul Anderson.
Yes.
Boochi, Christensen.
Yes.
Condon, DePietro.
Yes.
Kenon.
Yes.
Lucy, Nesta.
We need to change my...
Spatafora.
Yes. Moving down to 10 claims.
The claims of Warren Doolin, 75 Bloomerth Street, and Heather Collins, 12 A, Grand Court.
On Councilor Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is referred to finance. Moving down to item number 11, committee reports.
The Standing Committee on Finance, to whom was referred papers number 21 through 25, having considered the same, make the following report. Order that $25,000 be transferred to public facilities overtime, $11,916 to IT data supplies, $7,500 to traffic overtime, $5,000 to assessors' revaluation, and $10,378.33 to inspectional services, professional services. Committee recommends that these papers be adopted, be reported out favorably. Voted 6 to 0, Councilor Lucy for the committee.
On Councilor Lucy's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? On Councilor Lucy's motion to, oh, Councilor, do you want to speak? Sorry, Council. The lights, for some reason, aren't lighting so.
If I could, these, all five papers were taken up in finance last week. Two items are just money within a department, there's nothing more money cost than the city, and three items are, you know, two of them are small transfers and cash, one, public facilities overtime with all the snow and everything going on, you know, the need for overtime in the buildings, shoveling the snow and things of that nature. All five are voted up favorable, 6 to nothing. So I'd ask the committee, full committee, to approve it. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilor Lucy? On Councilor Lucy's motion to adopt, clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Neil Anderson.
Yes.
Paul Anderson, Boochi, Christensen.
Yes.
Condon, DePietro.
Yes.
Kenon.
Yes.
Lucy.
Yes.
Nesta.
Yes.
Spatafora.
Yes. And before we move to licenses, I just want to remind the council, I apologize, the lights are not lighting up, so if you need my attention, throw something or acknowledge me, I just, I can't, the lights are not working, so I apologize if I've skipped over any of it.
Standing Committee on License, to whom is referred papers number 20A and B for extended hours renewals, 19A and B Class 1 dealer renewals, papers number 18A through E, Class 2 dealer renewals, and papers 3B through D, application for renewal of taxi driver licenses. Committee recommends that these licenses be granted. Voted favorably, 4 to 0, Councilor Anderson for the committee.
On Councilor Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Council Anderson for the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilors, as you know, we, in the license committee, met last week. We reviewed each of these, these applications. They are all renewals. We check with our compliance officers to make sure that these establishments, whether they be convenience stores or, in the case of Class 1 auto dealers or Class 2 auto dealers, that they are in compliance with our city ordinances, regulations, their taxes have been paid, and we voted them favorably and would hope that the full council would approve these papers. With the same regard with the taxi drivers' licenses. Applicants had come before us. We reviewed their backgrounds and voted favorably upon that. And I would ask the full council to vote favorably upon all of these license applications.
Thank you, Council Anderson. Any questions for Council Anderson? On Councilor Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motions are, licenses are granted.
Standing Committee on License, to whom is referred papers number 3E, G, and H. Application for renewal of taxi driver licenses. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends that these licenses be denied. Voted 4 to 0, Councilor Anderson for the committee.
On Councilor Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Council Anderson for the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are licenses that come before us that we don't feel are appropriate for one reason or another. We review the backgrounds, review the history of, in this case, the taxi driver applications, and these that are before us, we're not approving and would hope that the council would deny the application of these licenses.
Thank you, Council. Any questions for Council Anderson? On Council Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor? On Council Anderson's motion to deny, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Licenses are denied. Tabled paper. Docket is clear. Personal privilege to my right, Councilor. I can't see the lights, Councilor, so if you have any personal privilege, Councilor DePietro.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to ask the... I'd just like to ask the residents of Malden to be careful in light of an article that was in the Globe about sledding. And we have all partaken in the, in the very enjoyable pastime of sledding. In War III, there's the premier destination, Felsmea Pond Park. And I urge all residents to please sled safely. And putting on a helmet would be advisable as well. So I hope everybody enjoys themselves, but please act responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Council DePietro. Council Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to let everyone know, if they don't already know, there's a fundraiser this Friday down Anthony's for Nicholas Di Felice. The Di Felices are a longtime Malden family. I actually went to school with the father, Brian. They have a fundraiser. Nicholas is trying to recover from cancer. It's, the fundraiser's to defray medical costs. Tickets are $25. Kids are free. It's six to 10 down Anthony's this Friday. And I know Malden, whenever these things come up, these types of fundraisers, the response is always great because we always have it in our hearts to help those that are trying to get by. So the Di Felice and family in Malden, so it's a longtime Malden family. Like I say, six to 10 at Anthony's. If there's a name, you can contact for tickets. Her name is Patricia. Her number's 617-372-0473. And I hope to see everyone there Friday night in Anthony's. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lucy. Councilor Condon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to extend my congratulations to our council president and his lovely wife, Debbie, who are expecting their second child. So Mariano will have a brother or sister.
Thank you, Council Condon. And for those of you, the last two minutes right before I denied, Council Condon reminded me that I was having a second child, and I dazed off for several minutes there, realizing that too. So thank you, Council. Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate it. I will need the help. Councilor Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder to the neighborhood, tomorrow night, we'll have a neighborhood meeting at the Ferryway School Library at 6:00 PM to discuss the Green Street, Medford Street, Belrock Street intersection. We'll have our city engineer, Jack Russell, on hand, as well as a representative from Face, Barford, and Thorne Dyke, to go over how bad the intersection is and a couple of potential solutions. So again, the meeting starts at 6:00 PM tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Con, Christensen. Councilor Jim Nester?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind the residents of Ward Four that on Wednesday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM, we'll have a crime prevention meeting at the Oak Grove Community Center. And Officer McKay from the Malden Police Department will be on hand with presentations on statistics and other incidents in the ward, as well as providing tips on how to protect yourself and your property. Thank you.
Seeing none and hearing none, no more lights. On Councilor Christensen's motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned.